Welcome everyone to our official meeting. We're going to start with our conference agenda.
Freeholder's hot there. All right, here. Here, Tommy. Here's Freeholder Jane. Here's Freeholder Zare.
Here. Okay, we're going to start off. Our conference agenda, I would like to give my freeholder stand query. And two students who just stayed down at Tech. And question after question. So, every year, NJAC Foundation in conjunction with Investors Bank give out scholarships in all 21 counties throughout St., New Jersey. And they give out two $500 scholarship checks to students who excel in their schools. So, we have two students from St. County Tech that we would like to recognize tonight. It's Jeanette Begoun and Maj, I don't think it's Maj, you're sure I got that? Siddiqi. So, what happens is that these two students from St. County Tech are recommended by their teachers. And we've had some wonderful things that the teachers have had to say about them. And you already know, one of you is going to Rutgers and one is going to William-Patton, correct? Okay, and what we want to do is wish them all the best in their diverse future. I know these checks will help so much with what they have to do. I would like to turn this mic over to you. And maybe you wanted to talk a little bit about what you do.
Hi, my name is Andrew. I actually work in the Clifton Avenue branch here in Clifton, New Jersey. Thank you for having me. Basically, what I do is business development and go out and see all the businesses. I want to congratulate the girls for a great job and, you know, we're just here representing. But I got a good one.
You're still proud of yourselves. I mean, you have over 4.0 averages and you both go for biology. So, that's good. A pediatric doctor. That's it. And what do you, what do you want? A pediatric dentist. Wow, that's amazing. Thank you so much, Pidi. This is a $500 check from Entrepreneur's University, which I'm going to hand to you. And I have a couple of certificates for you. One of them is from the county of St. The Board of Chosen Freeholders in recognition and appreciation. Sir, we'll give this certificate to you for receiving the 2017 Scholarship Award from NJAC, NJAC and Investors Bank for outstanding academic achievement. Congratulations. And now, another certificate, any one of you?
This is for NJAC Foundation, Investors Bank Foundation 2017 Scholarship Program Award, presented to Maj Siddiqi in recognition for her dedication to academic excellence and distinguished scholastic achievement. Congratulations.
I gave her a chance to say something, but now's not the time. Okay, the other one we have is for Jeanette. You want to say that, right? From William-Patton University, it's a $500 check. And I'll be going through studies. We hope that we wish you all the best with your check. I would be giving one thank to the Board of Chosen Freeholders. The Board of Chosen Freeholders in recognition and appreciation of your certificate. Jeanette Begoun for receiving the 2017 Scholarship Award from NJAC and Investors Bank Foundation for your outstanding academic achievements. We wish you great success at William-Patton University and in all of your future endeavors. Congratulations.
This one, NJAC Foundation and Investors Bank Foundation 2017 Scholarship Program Award, presented to Jeanette Begoun, correct? In recognition for your dedication to academic excellence and distinguished scholastic achievement. Congratulations.
We're proud of our new girls and I'm sure your families are here and they must be very proud of you too. Because it takes a lot of hard work to get to where you are. And you have a great future, haven't you? And you're, I can't, I couldn't be more proud that you have these awards and the checks for your schools. And to the parents, congratulations. You've done a great job in raising your daughters and I know they have a great future ahead of them. Oh, we can take a picture now?
Let's go.
You know what I'd like to provide to families on the street as well, so?
Congratulations. Right, Director, next on the agenda, we have two proclamations to present to Mr. Franco Mize, who has been recently installed as New York State County Bar President in his spare time when he's not practicing law and now having headaches of being president of the bar association. He also represents the great citizens of Wayne. He's a third ward councilman in the township of Wayne. And Franco will ask you to come up. We have Assemblyman Gary Share, who has a proclamation, I believe, on behalf of the state assembly. And we have Freeholder John Bartlett, although I don't think he's a resident of the third ward.
No, no.
He's a resident of Wayne to make a presentation.
I don't know if the Assemblyman would be able to, in order to seniority of the board in order, I guess, for the hook. So, why don't I begin? And let's see, here comes, I'm asking, so good evening, everyone. I have the privilege of both being attorney on the board, which makes Franco's work as bar district so relevant, as well as the Wayne resident. And I know that he's been a leader in our council, including council president, a public figure already, in our town of Wayne. So, it's a privilege to read this to the Director. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the county of St., this is where the Honorable Franco Mize has been installed as president of the St. County Bar Association during its 128th Annual Installation Dinner on May 6, 2017. And whereas Franco Mize, resident of the township of Wayne, is a graduate of Villanova University and its School of Law. And whereas Franco Mize served as a member of the Wayne Township Council, the Wayne Board, and served the Wayne Board of Education and the Tachnak Lake Community Association Board of Governors. And whereas Franco Mize served as president of the Robert F. Clifford Inn of Court and is a respected shareholder in the law firm of Weiner and Mize, PC, where he served with distinction as a litigation attorney handling complex legal matters throughout New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. And whereas Franco Mize and his wife Michelle are the proud parents of Luke, Michael, and John. And whereas Franco Mize is a committed and caring person who views unselfishly and freely of his time and energy in helping others and enriching the lives of the community at large. And this board would like to publicly recognize, acknowledge, and applaud the outstanding and continuing contributions made by Councilman Mize. Now therefore, we are proclaiming by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the county of St. that it publicly congratulates Franco Mize upon his installation as president of the St. County Bar Association. And be it further proclaimed that the board wishes Franco Mize continued health, happiness, and success.
Thank you, Freeholder. Freeholders, Director, Deputy Director members of the board, thank you so much for the honor and privilege to be with you tonight. I will admit that my proclamation reads almost perfectly like John's, right? While the difference is mine comes in a flimsy piece of cardboard and John's in a beautiful frame. And perhaps that speaks to the county of St.'s finances versus the state of New Jersey. But we do want to acknowledge Franco for all that he has done. And although he claims Wayne is his home, we are equally proud in the city of St. to have him practice law there with his partner Joe Weiner, two esteemed members of the legal community and members who have done so very, very much for the people and children, specifically for the city of St. And we are honored to join with Freeholder Bartlett in acknowledging the tremendous work that he has done over these many, many years. And most importantly, as he steps up and has stepped up to the mantle of leadership of the St. Bar Association. There's so much going on in this county, in this city, in this state, and in this nation. Many people would suggest that a good lawyer is exactly what several people could use, although not speak who they might be. But I would like to thank the board for the provision, honor, to be here and to congratulate Franco on this auspicious occasion. Thank you, man.
Good evening, everyone. Again, as I'm so privileged and honored and humbled to be here today, I want to thank Assemblyman Share, Madam Director, Freeholder, Freeholder John Bartlett, and the entire Freeholder staff or members collectively. It is truly an honor to be here on behalf and representing the 400-plus members of the St. County Bar Association. And I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you to St. County. Thank you to the Freeholders, who we will continue to work with as an association to educate our constituents. If you are here on any given Tuesday of the month, then we will be publicizing a seminar series where we educate the community and the attorneys practicing within it to fulfill the services to the constituents, who are the shareholders of this great community. As the Assemblyman said, I'm not only a proud resident of St. County, but I am a small business owner in the proud city of St. And I'm glad to do that. So, again, with acknowledgement to everyone, I thank you for this opportunity. And we will continue to be at the forefront of all the counties of New Jersey to help assist our residents. Thank you.
Franco, before you leave, Franco, Franco, before you leave, just in case you aren't getting invited to the facilities meetings that we have once a month with the course, remember that beautifully. We're just going to sweep around a little bit. There's something that is not on the administrator's report. I'm going to turn over this portion to Freeholder Dr.
Thank you so much for being here. It is my great honor, I don't think it is aware, but it's my great honor to be here to honor our Vicomand Commander Norah Pacha for his heroic actions. I want to read here from the proclamation, and say a few words. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the county of St. desires recognizing one of its own, Sheriff's Officer Commander Norah Pacha. Where Commander Norah Pacha was off duty traveling on Blue Ridge West, he saw a man standing outside the bridge railing in the area of Main Street and 21st Avenue. And while others were looking on Commander Pacha, sprang into action, calling headquarters to request assistance on the scene, didn't get his vehicle. And whereas Commander Pacha then began a process that he had utilized countless times in hostage negotiations for a St. County Sheriff's Office in 2005. Whereas Commander Norah Pacha, giving the impression that he was not a law enforcement officer, approached the man at the bottom of order and asked if he had lighter or whether he wanted some more, indicated the man's car broken down and he needed to get it off the highway before the cops come. And he offered the man money to help him get the car started because he was waiting two hours for a mechanic to arrive. And whereas the man said he was panicked and turned around, climbed back over the railing, where Commander Pacha had him sit, calm him down, and explained to him that there were people who could help. The man further stated that he planned to jump in front of a large truck. Whereas the New Jersey State Police St. County Sheriff's Office units were live on the scene. The man was transported to St. Joseph Regional Medical Center. But had it not been for the immediate response by Sheriff's Officer Commander Norah Pacha, this man may have committed suicide. Whereas this board wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to the Sheriff's Officer, Commander Pacha, by recognizing for his genuine interest in serving the St. City of Kansas State. Now therefore, we proclaim by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the county of St. that it publicly recognizes and commands Sheriff's Officer Commander Norah Pacha on a job well done. Thanks, I just want to say a little briefly that, you know, I'm so grateful that so many fellow sheriff officers showed up here. This is something I'm sure that Norah's thinking right now, that this is really, out of all the actions he's taken, maybe not one that he thinks of as highly as some of the others. Because it's just part of his duty, part of his job, and part of the job of so many sheriff officers. Do every day, whether it is on duty or off duty. But truly, when we get a chance to honor somebody who we know for a long time, who's a friend of so many, who served us a long, we have to take those opportunities. And I'm thankful to all our sheriff officers for the job they do. And I'm very thankful, Norah. And it's my honor to welcome our sheriff, if you're involved.
If I could have New Jersey State Police Sergeant Rich Allen please come up here. Ladies and gentlemen, first and foremost, again, I want to thank the Freeholders. I want to thank the administrator for, again, acknowledging the great actions of our commander. As you can see, he's highly decorated and he'll be even a little bit more decorated after today. Again, he did an outstanding job and I'm very proud of him as of course, we all are administrators here. But again, it's not only about Norah today, even though it is somewhat. It's about all our sheriff's officers, whether they're in the courthouse, whether they're on the road, whether they're working in a jail. They do an outstanding each and every day and it's nice to be acknowledged. We appreciate that. And it's really a great honor for all of us. I called up the Sergeant of the State Police because of course, Route 80 is their highway. So, I just want you to know Sergeant, that the St. County is going to be sending a state of bill assisting in that endeavor. So, it's forthcoming. And again, we had a great working relationship. We appreciate your support as well. And anytime you need any assistance, we are, we are there. So, without further ado, I'd like to just introduce our Chair, John Curry, who will you know for a few minutes.
Thank you, Sergeant. Hold up a minute there. I earned a trophy, hold up a word, of course, I'm so proud of the work you do every day. Councilman and administrator. Ladies and gentlemen, none of this surprises me of Commander Pacha. Commander Pacha has been in office of the 31 years. He loves his job. As you know, he could have retired six years ago. And you would get any of this type of action. Although when I read this story, I was shocked because I would never think to be that perceptive. You know, and use something that simple to get a man off a bridge. Listen, he's truly saved the lives. He's saved many lives. They've been in many situations over the years. And I tell you, that young man today, I pray to God that he's getting all the help that he needs. Because I understand that he has a daughter that he was reconnected with after this incident. So, Commander, we all congratulate you. And of course, we are proud of our entire women running the sheriff department. There's loads of officers even in force there. But we congratulate you today on being another great job for just something in your everyday routine. Thank you, Director.
I always know we've got a few remarks from Sergeant.
I'm very humble, Sheriff. I don't know why, I have nothing to say really, but the commander called me. He told me what was going on. I said, "We got it." Said, "I'm all ready, I'll handle it." So, I thought the subject moved, Norah. And I'm old enough to say. Finally, he let him down and I'm glad he got to be over there. It's an honor to be here.
I honestly had no idea. I thought I was coming here to back up the sheriff. See, I'm his muscle, but he backed me up. I want to thank for Assad, Madam Freeholders, the Freeholders of St. County, the Director, the County Council. I want to thank my friends, the Sheriff Department, the Executive President, the Vice President, the Chief, the Chairman, the Sheriff. I don't have to announce their names, they're number one on the list. I want to thank my friends. I want to thank you very much for coming. I'm honored, I'm honored. And I was very surprised at this. I really accept it. It's part of my job, that's what I do as a chairman, as a sheriff. And I just want to cut it short. My daughter, number one, to me in my life. My brother's a monster. I accept this on behalf of the St. County Sheriff Department, because very well of them would have been to say, put their life, their life ahead of them to save somebody else. My brothers and sisters, I thank you very much. Freeholder, thank you so much. I'm honored.
This hearing is pursuant to NJAC 40:12-15.3 regarding the 2017 St. County Open Space and Barn Line Preservation Trust Fund, the board will oppose expenditures over $100,000. The presentation of the 2017 St. County Open Space Barn Line Preservation Trust Fund is held on tonight, Tuesday, November 15, 2017. The following hearing was advertised on the record and heard news on 2/3/17, 2017. It's best provided on the table, please. We'll talk about it. Freeholders hot there. One there, there. Nothing there. Four there. Deputy Director James, Freeholder Zare. Have any of you want to step forward? Do you want to at least just grab a loan?
So, the first project is the Humidale Diverger Field Basketball Court. The request was $100,000, basketballers, the recommendation is $100,000. Friends of Royal Harbor Arena, the aim of the project is to replace the upper arenas. The funds will replace the existing aging arenas with a new grid house for competition purposes and additional office space. Request was $222,000 and the recommendation is $222,000. The detachment of Little Falls submitted an application for Patterson Avenue Field Improvements. Request was $165,000 and the recommendation is also $165,000. Back porch park renovation in the township, in the borough of Wannacue. This is ongoing, playground improvements. And the request and the recommendation is $120,000. Township of Wayne submitted for the Kilroy Park Playground and Spray Court. This will replace older playground equipment and this will be water park. The request is $200,000 and the recommendation is also $200,000. In the borough of Woodward Park, the Frank Secari Memorial Park Field Replacement. This is an ongoing project. The request was four hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The recommendation is one hundred and fifty thousand. Additionally, there are two freeholder initiatives. First one is the City Green Community Gardens. It's year five. Previously, years one through four were funded. The recommendation is one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And the city of N.A.S.A., the ongoing rehabilitation of Dundee Island Park, the business for redevelopment and river access along that N.A.S.A. River in the city of N.A.S.A., the recommendation is five hundred and fifty dollars. And that's it.
I want to make a call motion for open ears on two vast projects, N.A.S.A. Open Space and Barn Line Preservation Trust Board's primary recommendations.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Ford, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Does anyone present desire to be heard on the recommendations? Are you voting?
Can you all not be voting? I need to close the box for you. Second.
Can you turn up the volume or can't hear you?
Okay, does anyone present desire to be heard on the recommendations that we just read by Catherine Karen?
We took what we hear.
My name is Jim McHirland, with Friends of Royal and Auburn. I'd like to thank the board, I'd like to thank the Open Space Committee. This president took this, and that one that we're going to get this coming year is actually the end of about a ten-year program which was started many years ago. Gordon Terry, yourself, and McHirland. Friends of Royal and Auburn, and I like everybody up there. It's in the town of Wayne. We no longer consider it a Wayne Town Park. We have, in fact, yesterday we had a meeting with Quinn come over. We have things from Patterson, Quinn, N.A.S.A. It's all over. It's the entire N.A.S.A. County hearing that we now use for Friends of Royal and Auburn. Go look it up, go to the website, and come visit us. It's funds from both the freeholders, the town of Wayne, private industry, and private people have been on over the past ten years to create this project. We thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else at the podium?
I need to close the box for you.
Um, Hocky and After.
Freeholders.
Freeholders, after.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Ford, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, sorry, Best, Ford, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Madam Director, I think we'll be in a position for the conference.
Okay, I have all the freeholders had an opportunity to review the agenda, K-1 through K-77.
Madam Director, we need to board, we have a few main starters if you're involved. Part of this, main starter, K-78, is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a F-350 truck from Wilford, the State County Sheriff's Office, East Bay contract. Resolution, main starter, K-79, is a resolution accepting the Federal Emergency Management Agency, F-MA, hazard mitigation grant for a standalone generator project for the State County Sheriff's Office. K-80, main starter, is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for acceptance of local bridge future needs funding from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Warwick Turnpike Bridge over the Little Brier Book, replacement of structure number one-six-zero-zero-four-four-seven, project in the township of West Milford. Resolution, main starter, K-81, for your consideration, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for an acceptance of local bridge future needs funding from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the superstructure reconstruction of the Spruce Street Bridge over the N.A.S.A. Project in the city of Patterson. And finally, Madam Director, for you to board, for your consideration, and all the things to clarify, let's put on the agenda, K-82, which is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for an acceptance of a local bridge future needs funding from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the scouring countermeasures for various N.A.S.A. County Bridge Projects in West Milford. There's no need for close session, Madam Director.
Just a quick question for our county council. Can you just give us the amounts on those three grant applications? I just want everybody to know that this is an application that we apply for from our engineering and our rules department, which we got these grants free from the transportation of the three granted.
I want to do the best I can. The scouring countermeasures in West Milford, the New Jersey Department of Transportation has allocated million dollars for the year twenty seventeen, the local bridge future needs and after. And DOT also reserves an additional formula for the discretion of the commissioner, of the county of this board, as many dollars for that project. Madam Director, through you. This is the Spruce Street Bridge in Patterson, um, zero point five, plus one. So I'm sort of adding up from these letters. I think it's two and a half million for that. And, uh, the Warwick Turnpike Bridge. Uh, the county has awarded six hundred and forty thousand for the replacement of this bridge. And an additional four fifty for the project from the local bridge future needs, so somewhere around one point four, uh, one, one point one, under, lower than one point.
Come on, point out, it's a lot of money coming from the county.
You all down to where your office starts? Do you have a motion to adjourn or not?
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Ford, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Can we move on to the second agenda? Do we have to announce another open public meeting?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement with open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this being specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted to reorganization being followed with the county clerk, posted administration, building a mail to two newspapers and courts under provisions of the law. Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, here, Lecour, here, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Can we all stand the information, please?
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love? Be gracious enough to, so to bless thy servants, our freeholders in this county of N.A.S.A. that thy people may dwell in peace and safety throughout the work. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands on our nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Is this the moment, science, do you remember all the men and women of God while serving the United States armed forces, including the two helicopter pilots who crashed in the middle? I want to approve the names of July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen. After, before, Russell.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Ford, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Yes. Do you have a motion to approve appropriations? Forty-seven, Bartlett and After.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Ford, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
I'm going to place two freehold reports.
I've got two major things to talk about. First of all, of course, I wanted to invite everyone from the public to our annual county fair. Our county fair is taking place this week, Thursday through Sunday, at Garrett Mountain Reserve, and we'll depart slash Patterson slash Clinton. This fair, like in the past several years, is going to feature a lot of free entertainment. Fireworks on Friday, Saturday night. We're having a wonderful, large, huge four-inch tent, which features our four-inch programs in the county of N.A.S.A. Those kids do a wonderful job, as well as the people who work with them. Additionally, we're bringing back the county chess tournament. The chess tournament has been a big hit, something we started a couple of years ago. This year, we have over two hundred people registered already, and you can actually have onsite registration, so any adults or kids wishing to play chess. If you've never even played one day before, we have a wonderful chess master there who will show you all the rules of the game. And I think last year, two kids who won never played chess before, and they were, they were nominees, and they actually didn't go on the chess tournament. So, but it was luck, I guess. In addition to that, just wanted to let everybody know that Thursday night is our family fun night. We're having a basketball game featuring the Harlem Wizards, playing against some of our sheriff officers, who you saw here tonight, I think they've been working out and getting ready, as well as some of our students from the State County Tech. Also, that is wristband night, where you can get in all the rides you want for twenty bucks. So twenty bucks rise, twenty bucks will allow you to ride all the new rides as many times as you want. Lastly, I just wanted to thank our sponsors for that, for our county fair. Our big sponsors coming in this year, obviously, is planned by the Friends of N.A.S.A. County Park. In addition to that, we have Shoemark Chevrolet, Lakewood Bank, and Rainstone. I also wanted to give a special shout-out to the co-chair, Mr. Jamie Dykes, from the Greater Patterson Chamber of Commerce, as well as all the wonderful volunteers that we have working on this, including our county administrator, Tony DeNove, and our deputy county administrator, Matt Jordan, for really coordinating all the activities that are going on this week. Secondly, if I may, yesterday, we held our first-ever State County Drug Policy Advisory Committee meeting. This was a meeting originally invited many of the stakeholders throughout the county of N.A.S.A. All of our mayors were invited, all of our police chiefs were invited, and we have representation from all sixteen municipalities here, as well as the major nonprofits and several community leaders to talk about what is really a national epidemic of drugs in America. But here in N.A.S.A. County, we see it, especially in the city of Patterson. And we had over seventy people in attendance at this meeting. We had a chance to go around, see what we were, who's doing what, find out what the left hand is doing, what the right hand is doing, and see if there's any opportunities for a coordinated effort. I just want to let the community know that we will continue to update you. We're going to host a couple of town hall meetings. And in addition to that, we established five subcommittees. I've been really aware that there are people in the community who want to still participate and be a part of this. We're going to open up those subcommittee meetings so that you will have a chance to be a part of the solutions. This problem, this epidemic, was not created overnight. It's not going to be solved overnight. And just want to take all of the minds and souls that we have in the county of N.A.S.A. to truly address it. So we open it up to everyone to come with solutions to address this national epidemic. So I want to thank my colleagues on the Freeholder Board for hosting this meeting, and also a special shout-out to our acting director of human services, Mr. Francine Pitts, who gave a great presentation and will be helping to coordinate this. Thank you, Madam Director.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to add to that. It was a very impressive meeting, by the way. I think we need to get it together because it's long overdue. So just want to remind everybody here, though, we also have a reactive program, and it's very successful. I know there was some hesitation about funding in the past. We're going to be asking for funding again for next year. The program has the same success rate as even this, it's in the eighties, eighty percentages implied, I believe it is, and that's pretty successful. It keeps people from reentering the jail, and it actually gives us hope for, you know, for addressing irritations. So it is a successful program. One of the things we talked about was money. This program needs to continue, so I hope that we get your support for even the budget next year. And I suggest, and it is in cooperation with the sheriff, the police, the services, our union services, department of churches, it's quite a bit of people involved who are stakeholders in that. I think, given your initiative, we should move responsibility to that to our union services department, so that there's no conflict. And I think it best to be out there, Francine and Pitts, so we can talk about that as a future project. That's where we want to be asking for more funding next year.
Director, I want to just take a minute, and we didn't have a chance to take away our public hearing earlier, and thank not only Catherine Karen, but all of the citizen volunteers that are part of our Open Space Advisory Committee. I looked through this list of major projects that are able to fund this year, and it's everything from Urban Riverfront Park to a wonderful operator run by a nonprofit in Wayne to recreational opportunity across the county. You know, one of the things that I'm so proud of over these last five years, and all of the, that I've been on the board, and even all of the fellow you have, is the investment we're able to make in our municipality and nonprofits, and through our county parks itself, in recreation and open space preservation. I just wanted to thank everybody involved with that. They're not up your podium, and not only Catherine, but today, the citizens and volunteers who've been on throughout the year to make that happen. So thank you.
Director, if I could also just add my comments to thank our colleague, Freeholder Best, for his initiative with the Drug Policy Advisory Committee. I thought it was a great first step, as he said, the first step, not the last step by far. I do want to make a point here that I made there, which is at the meeting, which is that, you know, it disturbs me when we talk about the drug problem that, you know, that's been going on for decades. We've been talking about it, just talking about it as a world on drugs. Unfortunately, it's described simply as an urban problem. And even today, I hear many people say it's a Patterson problem. And those people are, simply aren't paying attention to the facts. It is a Patterson problem. It is an urban problem, but it's also suburban problem, and it's also Patterson's burden. Because the truth is, is the statistics have shown from many different sources that the, that many, if not most, of the users in Patterson come from outside Patterson, and not just from other communities in State County, whilst to Borough County and other places. So that's not to point fingers and say there's anyone to blame, it's to say they're all in this together, and we simply can't just, you know, stereotype away out of this problem. So it's a great first step, and I look forward to it. And I just also want to conclude, Madam Director, by saying, you know, I know, I watched the events that happened in Charlottesville, a place I've been, a great community, and was just shocked and appalled by what happened there, but I also, it made me feel very grateful to this county, where we live. We're far from perfect. We have our disagreements, as happens in this body, but there are many people all over the world who came to this place, and I think we try our best, and to the worst where we succeed, it will be together. Thank you very much.
Freeholders, Best, I'm calling this Drug Advisory Committee together, because we all know how important it is. And Freeholder James, what you do with the reentry programs is amazing. I've seen all the hard work you've all been doing in that field. With that said, I want to just mention that in six weeks, about six weeks, November twenty-nine, the county will be holding a nonprofit informational summit. And we're going to bring a lot of this information to the summit for the nonprofits and 501(c)(3). And we're going to have our department heads from weatherization, from senior services, economic development, procurement, and human services. And what we hope to have is an open house for our, our counties' 501(c)(3) nonprofits, so they can see the services. I mean, we have a multitude of services open to the residents of this county. So go along with Freeholder Best. So go along with Freeholder Best, Freeholder James, and all the freeholders here. We want to invite you, if you are a nonprofit, to come to this informational summit and learn about the types of services you can apply for that will help your communities. Because it's so important to every single one of us sitting up here, that we do that, that we help the people who live in our hometowns, love our hometowns. So just keep that, I'll mention it again later on when we have a meeting, but it's September 29th, and it'll be on the website, and a lot of the nonprofits will begin getting information about it. If you are a nonprofit and you don't get the information, please don't hesitate to call the officer. Anyone else? We have a motion to accept the communications. James and Arthur, your call.
Freeholders, Arthur, yes, Bartlett, yes, Best, yes, Uppity, yes, Depp, James, yes, Director Lozare.
Yes. Do you have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting? Yes.
Freeholders, Arthur, yes, Bartlett, yes, Best, yes, Uppity, yes, Depp, James, yes, Director Lozare.
Yes. I'd like to, by members of the public, I want to share what we have to say. We have three minutes. We need you to state your name and your address before you start.
Good evening. Wahida Mohammed, Patterson. My first duty here tonight is to do something I was trying to do for some time. I would like our dear friend, Freeholder Deppy, to come forward, because I've been riding around with his t-shirts that he has faithfully, every year, supported the Grandparents' Relate Care Resource Center, our grandparents' day in the park. So this year, Freeholder is coming around, September 10th, so you can wear your beautiful t-shirt. And everybody upstairs, if you're real, bad, if you don't have it, you can wear it. Also, if you're here, make sure that you support the Stetica. I reached, at some extent, a Passaic Patterson, and we want to give him his t-shirt that I've been riding around in my car. It's very nice and clean and brand-new. Freeholder, because you always are there for us, and we thank you. The other thing I just want to say quickly is that I appreciate and thank you, Freeholder Best, for the initiative that you all had. I heard about it at a meeting the other night, and I was really thankful that you have, you know, you realize that it is a problem not just for Patterson, and that we all now need to come together to do something to fix that problem, because it's not just here. The last thing I'll say is, we also want you to know that the Grandparents' Relate Care Resource Center, thank you so much, Freeholder, for mentioning the fact that you've seen on Facebook or wherever about the things that we are doing there. But I want you to know that we have our own website now. So you can go online and see the good things, and come on by, Freeholder James, I know you've been there, and seeing us at another level. But you have to come and see where we are now, because it's really, really a blessing that we are there and able to do the things that you have helped us do. And I know that all of you that have not been there will be there shortly. So we're looking forward to seeing you. Thank you, God bless.
Hi, good evening. My name is Judith Basford. Good evening, Director Lozare and Freeholder Board. Tonight is the evening fair, where you can introduce my group. My name is Ninety-Two Hundred, we drive Clifton, New Jersey. I'm sorry. I come as a representative of the New Orleans Electoral Board of the Passaic County School Boards Association. Many of you don't know that each county has a local county school boards association. We are the arm of the New Jersey School Boards Association. My board of city members, I come to introduce them. First vice president is Charles Caravello. He's from Luthfield, Abulda. Kathy Kazan, she's vice president of Legislative Advocacy. She's from Wayne. Jeff Fisher is the New Jersey School Board Representative to the Board of Directors. And Nancy Schwartz, who's not with us tonight, she's absent because she has a sickness in the family. Passaic County School Board is your local county organization. The membership of the Passaic County School Boards Association is made up of 21 counties, school district, county, in the county. The goal of the Passaic County School Boards Association is to enhance the skills and knowledge of local board and education members throughout Passaic County. We serve as a forum for exchange of information and ideas, and as a catalyst to expedite and initiate action. The County School Boards Association meetings are opportunity for your local school board members to receive professional development, update information and current education initiatives, legislation, and regulations affecting public schools. The meeting enables board of education members to stay connected, work together, to advance the achievement of all public schools' students in the state of New Jersey. We are moving forward to form a collaborative relationship with our county leaders today and our state leaders. School boards across the county are facing tough times and facing many challenges. Together, we hope to be able to work together to overcome these issues. On a local county level, the local board is determined through hard work and commitment that we will progress moving forward in a productive and positive manner. Our first of our meeting, it's to be determined where we're going to have it, is October 12th. Please encourage any local school board member that you may know to get involved with the county organization. Through education, it works out for everybody that goes there. For more information, you can contact me at judibasford@gallup.com. My phone number is 973-418-8031. I thank you very much for letting me speak to you tonight, and I represent a very dynamic group of hardworking people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Scordo, head of the 16 Lincoln Terrace, Caldwell, New Jersey. I'm an attorney, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Passaic County resident, Arthur Heckel, 75 Jacobus Avenue, Little Falls, as well as representing Securus Technologies Company. And I'm here to speak about RFP 17, known as the inmate telephone system for Passaic County Jail. I believe the board should have a submission by my law firm, K&amp;L Gates, which was emailed over today. It's a letter from my partner, Tristan Romarbarisi, with exhibits. I apologize, it was a little ominous, 93 pages, but hopefully the board has that and can consider that. I'll just very briefly summarize what we have in our letter with respect to the process of which is being considered here and this resolution. We've laid out in the letter, and we hope the board agrees, that to use the Cooperative Purchasing Program to rebid this contract, just respectfully, we don't think that would work. We think you've got a problem there, because the CPP, the Cooperative Purchasing Program, requires that whatever deal that state has struck, the county can take that same exact deal. The problem is that the deal that the state has with Global Tel Link, I'll use the phrase, GTL, is through 2022, I think through April 2022. Our particular deal in consideration tonight is only a one-year deal, so the terms don't match up. So we suggest that the Cooperative Purchasing Program, exception to the bidding requirement, just is not applicable. We also don't think it applies because the 16 age rule is run. So to award GTL the contract, a no-bid contract under this exception, respectfully, we suggest that it won't work, and it's laid out there in more detail on our letter. There's a case law, and there's a reference to the statute. There's also a couple of practical and cost considerations. I'll be very brief. Cost-wise, if you'll notice, when the original bid went out, GTL bid 3.5 cents a minute. The state price is 5 cents a minute. That's $250,000 a year, not paid by the county, but paid by the residents of, the friends and family who'll be receiving the inmate phone calls. We suggest that a lot of those residents and friends and family are Passaic County residents. $250,000 out of their pocket into GTL's pocket, if we use this CPP exception. One other thing, as a practical matter, to move these systems, to replace these systems with new systems, is not an easy thing. It's a big technical undertaking, which would sorely be a waste of time if you just have to redo all again one year later. So instead, as we've suggested, the easier, the safer thing to do, we think the fairest thing to do, just send it out for rebid. Our company can bid, GTL can bid, the taxpayers' money won't be wasted. And in this way, you can consider all the issues, including the issues that we raised in our letter about the reputation of the GTL company. Thank you.
Matt and Director, Deputy Director for the Freeholders, my name is Eric Kineski. I'm also an attorney. I'm here representing Global Tel Link, who, as council just referenced, is on tonight's agenda.
Do you have your address?
Sure. It's, the law firm's located at 1085 Raymond Boulevard, Newark, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, I know this issue has been presented to the board now on a number of occasions, and I would like to just clear up some of the items that council just referenced. But before I begin, let me just explain, Global Tel Link is the leading provider in the United States of America of inmate haul services. More importantly, we are overwhelmingly the leader, leading provider in the state of New Jersey. We currently have 17 of the 19 county facilities we are servicing and providing these call services to. The only ones we're not are Passaic County, and can be, excuse me, Kegmei County. The reason why is because we were awarded, through a competitive bidding process done through the state, the State Department of Corrections. And that was an exhaustive process where the state did extensive procurement process to make sure they were getting the most competitive, the best services for the State Department of Corrections. Following that, 16 of the 17 counties in the state of New Jersey decided to go off of that cooperative purchasing agreement through the state for that very reason, because the state did already undertake that process. As a result of that process, we are offering, we have offered, those 16 counties one of the lowest rates in the United States of America. That is, as council said, that is the lowest rate for the inmates. All of the other fees, the fees to transition over, are borne by my client. They are the ones who pay to transition the services over to a new provider. There are no other vacant fees, no commissions, no taxes that will be borne by the inmates or by the county. Everything is borne by Global Tel Link, and that is the reason why we're the leader, not only in the country, but here in the state of New Jersey. Securus has only Passaic County at this point, and Kegmei County. On a night when there was so much positivity brought before the board, I don't want to belabor the points and turn these into legal arguments, but I do think it's important for the board to understand that there was a competitive bidding process here. We were actually here a couple of months ago. The board was prepared to award my client, Global Tel Link, the same one who has the state contract, the award from Passaic County, because it was through that competitive bidding process, including an evaluation committee that did look at all of the factors that both Securus is saying that should be looked at now, as well as the ones that will be determined to be looked at by the sheriff, by procurement, and by representatives of Passaic County Jail. They assessed not just pricing, but also all the factors that go into providing the most effective and efficient services for the jail and for the inmates, and they awarded the contract at that point, or they determined that the contract should be awarded, to Global Tel Link. Now, if I may, there was a technicality in that didn't go through, and so now the boards and the county are the ones who are getting the benefit of the state contract and the preferential pricing that the state got for that contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kurt Schneitkenberg, 268 Washington Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. To the freeholders of Passaic County, it is clear that the freeholders have a serious appreciation for the value of sporting activities in Passaic County Parks. Most of the recent renovations and plans for Passaic County Parks involve planning for new sports fields and activity areas. In a world filled with a population increasingly sedate and chairbound, the wish for people to move and be active is commendable. However, it occurs to me, there should also be room for appreciation of the natural world as a public good. Not every field must be mowed, not every tree groomed to make room for quartz. There should always be a place for nature in our lives. There is a value in appreciating our environment that should be recognized and defended. And increasingly urbanized lifestyle links any contact with the wild earth increasingly rare and precious. Again, I plead the case for the original and intended role of Rifle Camp Park, to be a place that contains significant natural areas and will celebrate and explains the role of nature in our world to all who come there. The original planners of the park could have filled the space with fields and activity areas, much as you now intend with your disc golf course proposal. They chose instead to carve simple trails and to build a nature center to explain what it is that we expect to find in this special place. From its humble beginnings in 1973, Rifle Camp Park has fulfilled this role with the satisfaction of many in the community. Unfortunately, time has not been kind to this park. The building that holds the nature center has deteriorated. The amenities of the park have not been maintained. This too was a choice made by the administration of Passaic County Parks. I understand that there have been plans to rebuild and restore much of the physical plan to this park, but what will be the goal of this rebuilding? Will it support the sports facility, which your proposal for disc golf has planned to remake the park? Or will the facility again aim to celebrate and explore nature, a natural world where current plans for the park appear to be directly in opposition to? I recently had the occasion to visit a very effective and modern nature center established in a small park in Black Hall. This is the J.A. McFaul Environmental Center in Bergen County. You may have heard of this place. I suggest you might consider visiting it. The J.A. McFaul Environmental Center is an absolute gem, a patch of nature and misty landscape otherwise sculpted and shaped entirely by humans. The park includes a wing road, a compact but effective museum building, an entertaining local animal zoo, an artificial pond, and trails and walkways that make the most of their constrained space. At the McFaul Environmental Center, fallen trees are not removed. They instead may receive an explanatory plaque explaining what may be found living in the fallen log. Trails and sensitive wetlands are lifted on walkways to preserve the ground beneath them. The focus is entirely on welcoming visitors by exploring and celebrating the nature that can be found all around them. This park works, and so does, and does so without the history, natural assets, and spectacular vistas that Rifle Camp Park can bring.
Good evening. I am Vera Lozare, 22 Spencer Ave in Clifton. I'm here tonight, once again, to ask you, our elected officials, to reject the installation of the proposed disc golf course at Rifle Camp Park. There's been a great deal of misinformation being split regarding the disc golf course, and I urge you to listen to these facts and to listen to the many people and organizations who have been reaching out to you. Rifle Camp Park is not the appropriate location for a disc golf course. The park contains the only undeveloped natural area in Lower Passaic County. It is of critical importance, not only to the many species of birds and wildlife, but for all the people of Lower Passaic County. A disc golf course would have a highly detrimental impact on the forest ecosystem and migratory bird habitat, and will result in severe degradation of this important natural area. The plan will also eliminate important passive recreation opportunities for the residents of Lower Passaic County. I would like to emphasize that this is not about one small group of people who want to use the park their own way. This is about all Passaic County residents. The plan for the disc golf course will take the park away from the vast majority of residents. According to the Passaic County Open Space Master Plan, the vast majority indicated a need for hiking and nature trails, and 49% indicated a need for natural areas and wildlife habitat. The disc golf course at Rifle Camp will remove many nature trails from safe public use. The fairways directly intersect and run a The fairways directly intersect and run adjacent to these trails. This is clearly not consistent with the master plan nor the needs of county residents. There's also a misconception that the disc golf course will have little effect on the environment. The truth is that installing a disc golf course in this park will have a highly detrimental impact and will eliminate important bird and wildlife habitat. Soil erosion and sedimentation will cause further environmental degradation impacting wetlands and feeder streams to local water resources. Surely there must be a more appropriate place to locate a disc golf course and I urge you again to look at alternate locations. And finally, I would like to emphasize that this is clearly a change in use under green acres regulations and a proper public hearing needs to be held. Don't let your legacy be the destruction of this important natural area.
Thank you. I also have, I review here copies, the petition is still active, but here are maybe two of our, these are copies. These are copies of the, this is the copy of the letter sent by the district director.
Mary Walsh, 64 Davis Avenue, Hattiesack, New Jersey, I'm the conservation co-chair of the Northwest Jerseys here in Caldwell. I dare tell you there are 1,500 signatures on that petition. You may be aware of a letter which was recently sent to your assistant counsel, Mr. Belovin, a copy to Mr. Pasfron, and a copy to Ms. Mackleeter at Horizon Blue Cross. The letter is with regard to the laws which the county is required to follow and the legal actions which will take place if those laws are not followed. I will review briefly, too, which you have been missing following up on. You have mentioned the change in use, which requires the public hearing. The county proposes a dog park to be built on wetlands. Our information to date is that you have not hired an independent qualified wetland scientist to delineate the boundaries of these wetlands and submit a formal application for a letter of interpretation to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for verification. As you are aware, the absence of any investigation and determination by the DEP as to whether wetlands are present and will be disturbed puts the county at risk of violating the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act rules. Your awareness of such a risk puts an obligation on you to ensure that the law is complied Third-party vendors will be needed to provide services in respect to the adoption of the proposed disc golf course. This gives rise to questions of public access and use of the park and the extent of the disposal of public benefits to private interests after the implementation of the proposed disc golf course. Clearly, the public has an interest in having these issues debated at a public hearing. We look forward to the establishment of this hearing within the near future. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Barry, retired as a staff writer for the record. Spent half of my life in Passaic County, a person as a reporter. Rifle Camp Park was one of the best places I've found to go get some relief between It is a gem. It's also listed in the New Jersey Walk Book published by the New York New Jersey Trail Conference as a gem. It's also listed on the website of the Audmon Society between Garrett Mountain Park and Rifle Camp Park. If you're a bird, that's where people head for in the spring and fall. It has a legendary reputation as a critical site for migrating birds. When do the birds come there? The presence of forests. If the forest is cut into, we don't have the migrating birds anymore. I'm calling these to your attention because people come from all over North Jersey, from New York City, to enjoy what's on Garrett Mountain, used to live in Montclair, all the way across the bridge, and other parts of the Hudson Bridge. There are famous buildings, looking to see rocks, and swarthy, et cetera. Thank you very much.
My name is Walter Tony, 1197 Gurley Avenue in Clifton, 07013. It's just off Valley Road, which is at the foot of Garrett Mountain. I'm very familiar with Rifle Camp Park and I just wanted to add my voice to those who have quite adequately expressed reservations about the plan to put a disc golf course in Rifle Camp Park. I attended one of your hearings several months ago where there were people backing the plan to put the golf course in the, the disc golf course in the park. And I noticed that most of them seem to be from out of the county. I think there was one from up county and there might have been one from Little Falls. But it occurs to me that basically there's spending $20,000 and cutting down over 100 trees to benefit people who do not live in the county, basically. I do not know of any local disc golf club that may be one, I don't know, but I have not heard that there is. So I question the idea of damaging the ecosystem that way, spending that much money on something that will be used by people from out of the county. I just want to say also that I want to second what people have said, that the park is the last natural area in Lower Passaic County. There is a movement presently, which you may